That we approve a $3,500 contribution to them as budgeted. Keeping in mind that this is underneath the request that they have placed to us, but it's what we budgeted at this time. Do I have any questions for the Director?
Mr. Mayor.
Would you go through again how a senior qualifies for the Meals on Wheels program? And secondly, have you done a presentation before the Wooddale Senior Club? And if not, would you be willing to do so at one of their meetings?
If I can address your second question first, no, I haven't had that opportunity, and I'd be glad to do that.
First Wednesday of every month at 11:00.
Okay.
At the Wooddale Park District. And I'll be glad to put you on the agenda, or get you on the agenda.
Thank you. It'd be great. Seniors qualify when there's a senior who, family member, social worker, person from their church believes that they're in need of the home-delivered meal program. They can contact us directly, and we can get them started. And then the DuPage County Senior Services will actually go out and do an assessment. Also, people contact the county directly, they come out and do an assessment, and then they will send us an intake form, and then we will get them on our daily route sheet. There are a number of seniors who, because of, maybe they're having a hip replacement, might be on the program for a short period of time and go off. And there are other seniors that are on the program, pretty much on a permanent basis, so.
Could you again, be a little more specific, what it takes to qualify for the program? Is it economic? Is it disability?
No, it's specifically for the home-delivered meal program, it's based on their ability to prepare the meals for themselves, or get out and shop. It's not economic-based. The reality is, a lot of the people who are on the program have challenges economically, but it's not economic-based. It's based on a senior's ability to provide for themselves, and on how frail they are. That can be a temporary situation, or it can be a long-term situation.
My guess is, the more you can get to the congregate places, the cheaper the cost goes down for your organization. How many people from Wooddale do we have going to those congregate locations?
Let me double-check.
I think you said 64?
It was 64 meals. There were 16 seniors, 16 individual seniors who took advantage of the congregate program.
Is it true that it is cheaper for you guys to provide meals on a congregate basis rather than home-to-home?
Yes, yes, it is. Because all of our meals are delivered by volunteers, and there's staff that has to do the routing, so the cost is, the cost is maybe 50 cents per meal cheaper.
So, i-if we expanded our bus program to allow to go to that location, would you have the ability to market that, our bus program, for the Wooddale residents?
Most definitely.
Saying that the Wooddale bus service allows us to take you there and back?
Yeah, we would be glad to do that.
And the other question was, does the county, do they do any funding for the unincorporated areas, county of DuPage?
The, DuPage County provides us with about $40,000 a year in, it's a human services grant. I don't know if it's, are you asking me if those dollars?
I mean, that's grant money that they receive, I'm assuming from the state. But do they actually, you know, I feel bad that we can't do more, because you're asking for $10,000.
Right.
We're proposing 3,500.
Right.
But I'm saying, do we go to the county, and out of their operating fund, say to Mr. Shilstrom, you know, how much do you contribute? Because we have a lot of residents in Wooddale that are in unincorporated Wooddale, so they're in DuPage County, under their jurisdiction.
Right. And those seniors, those seniors are served?
Right.
So, currently, through their human services grant, we get $40,000.
Okay.
To help with the home-delivered meal program.
Any other questions? The only thing that I would ask is if you could submit a list on where those centers are.
Oh, most definitely.
Okay. So, if there ain't no other questions, I'm gonna make a motion to approve $3,500 for this. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And also, we'll make sure that when we do the presentation for the seniors, we'll emphasize where those locations are at.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll jump up to, thank you very much for coming up. Our report on performance of administrative processing fees for impound vehicles 2005, 2006. Projects 2006, '07.
To my immediate left is Sergeant Mike Rivas, the Wooddale Police Department. Mike is directly involved, or directly oversees, the administration of this program. Once again, just going back, last May of 2005, we originally started this program. We came back to you, correction, June of 2005, and May of this year, we came back to you and asked for an amendment on this, and we felt that this time it would be important for you to know what our efforts are accomplishing, and how the ability that you gave us to implement this program is being administered. So, now I'm gonna give you Sergeant Rivas, and he'll give us a PowerPoint presentation on the program.
Thank you, Chief Benowitz. Good evening to everyone. As the Chief had indicated, I'm gonna discuss the vehicle seizure and impoundment, and the application fees that are, that come with that. And I'm gonna be discussing a brief history, current operations, and the future of the application of the processing fee as it relates to the seizure of vehicles. And a couple of items that I wanted to present to you for discussion. The seizure and impoundment of vehicles is an effective method to interrupt, and in some cases even stifle, an offender's ability to repeat certain criminal activity, and/or endanger the safety of innocent motors. And also, the courts have determined that municipalities, including non-home rule communities such as Wooddale, possesses the authority to recover extraordinary costs incurred with the provision of certain police services. And this is relating to whatever the police department doesn't arrest for, for an intoxicated driver, an unlicensed driver, any crimes of opportunity like a burglary or theft where they're using a vehicle, drug transportation using a vehicle for conveyance, serious criminal offenses, unlawful use of a weapon, or an aggravated battery. And in summary, the seizing of a vehicle greatly reduces a criminal's ability to carry out future crimes. In my 16 years as a law enforcement officer, I've only come across one person who had committed burglaries in neighboring towns and ours, who was using a bicycle. So, that shows you that a car is definitely a major tool in committing the crimes that we face. And now, what I'm gonna discuss is a brief history of where we're at before the application of the ordinance for the seizure of vehicles. And before towing and seizure ordinance was enacted and passed, vehicles would be towed for the following reasons: abandoned on a public property, motor assist, or a broken-down car, traffic crashes, and, for the most part, traffic arrests. And on June 2nd, as you know, in 2005, the ordinance was passed, where five offenses would allow us to seize a vehicle and have an administrative fee applied on that vehicle. And on July 1st, 2005, we're fully operational in training all of our staff, and we had to have everybody onboard, our records, our telecommunicators, our patrol officers, to be well-informed of this ordinance, so they can carry it out. And from July 1st to December 31st of 2005, we had seized 79 vehicles for three different types of offenses, for DUI, burglary, aggravated fleeing, and eluding. And then, April 20, 2006, the amended ordinance was passed, which increased the number of offenses to 10, and the administrative fee was then doubled. And then, May 1, 2006, staff was trained again to bring them up to speed to the nuances of the, of the amended ordinance. And to date, we have 194 vehicles that were seized for the offenses of DUI, driving while license revoked, suspended, not having a license, and possession of cannabis. It says 192, but we added two today, so as you can see, that number is constantly growing. And now for our current operations. Basically, we have a police officer on the street who may observe somebody committing a traffic violation, who'll pull that vehicle over, and then, after a brief conversation with that person, may determine that a crime has been committed, possibly the person's intoxicated, or doesn't have a license at all. At that point, the officer places that person into custody and arrests them, and informs them that their vehicle is being seized pursuant to our ordinance. And then, at that point, the officer communicates their communication center and radios in for a tow, and we tow the vehicle away, and then during processing, they're given a written notice of the seizure of the vehicle. And then, at that point, they're also sent a written notice via certified mail, that there's a hearing that they're eligible to go to, and it's up to them if they want to go to the administrative hearing or not, to determine if the driver is liable or not liable for the seizure and administrative fee that's applied. Files are created on every vehicle that we seize, and all the files that we have are then forwarded to the administrative hearing officer, who then tries every case that appears before them on their docket, as well as having the cases tried by the city attorney. And currently, on average, we approximately have 50 cases that are heard by the hearing officer, where the cases are either tried, as found as either liable or not liable, or continue to the next state. And then, the future, an ordinance like this definitely goes along with improving the quality of life by removing vehicles of alleged criminals and unlicensed drivers. And the spiraling costs of public service, technology, equipment, and fuel are somewhat offset by the administrative fees applied. And the costs of public service in the form of traffic arrests are applied to the subjects arrested, and not Wooddale citizens themselves, kind of in the form of a user fee, if you will. We will continue to look at ways to legally and officially offset our expenditures with future programs and ordinance, such as an important one just as this.
Wow, that was quick. Any questions? I know, Stanley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for you. Prior to us passing this ordinance, if you had to tow a vehicle, am I understanding correctly, the city was incurring the cost of that?
Yes, the person had to pay for their tow out of the tow yard. We recently did a cost analysis of several selected cases. Right now, we're expending about $650 of our time for everybody that touches that vehicle that is buried in our budget. For an unlicensed driver, it's a little bit less, I believe that's around $350 per incident. And that's how we arrived at that $500 figure for the bonds to be placed on these, so that we can then equalize our cost against the people that are demanding the service.
Who is our hearing officer that does these hearings?
Bob Toskis. He's an attorney out of Pales Heights. He's a specially-trained hearing officer for this. And then, the cases are actually represented, the city of Wooddale is actually represented by our traffic court attorney, Bill Belmonte.
And then, the way these numbers change, can we have a ticker on the TV, where when people are watching this, we can tell them how many vehicles we have seized on an annual basis?
Once again, you know, we're trying to be efficient and effective here. We're trying to put the true cost for our services to the people that are using it because of their bad decisions, and we're trying to minimize the effect back to the city, then.
You said you had 194 cars, 192 cars that you'd done over a period of time? Where do you keep them all?
Those cars are turned over to the impoundment lots through our agreements with them. They have the balement that exists between them and the towed vehicle. The vehicle is not released, given a release from our staff until the $500 bond has been posted with us.
Okay. Anyone else? I have one question. On the brief history, are we, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but we are charging a motorist's car breaks down $500?
No, that's not correct. In the past, we would've had to tow somebody's car like that if it broke down on the roadway for them. That's just an object lesson of what we did in the past than what we just towed cars for. We do not tow people's cars, or impound their, place a bond on their car if they have not been arrested. The ordinance states that for those 10 offenses, we can request them to place a bond. A motorist's assist is not one of them.
Okay, well, I'm just reading the...
I'd also like to just add that we are in front of this. We have municipalities, Elkhorn villages considering doing this. Itasca does it on a much lesser scale and very informal. Addison does it. Hanover Park, Schaumburg, Lombard's starting to look at this, and Glendale Heights. So, once again, back in 2005, we were, we were out in front of this along with Hanover Park, and now, a lot of people, a lot of other towns that are home rule or non-home rule, are starting to look at this as a viable alternative to police services.
I think it has been the great revenue for us to do that, so I'm, thank you for coming out for that presentation. Any other questions? Oh, Marshall?
I wouldn't call it revenue, it's offsetting our cost, is really what it's doing.
Exactly, Alderman.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay, reporting recommendation, O'Hare Noise Capacity Commissioner.
Yes, for quite some time now, staff has been attending the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission meetings, and I'd just like to take a moment and tell committee what that group is all about. The ONCC, as it's called, is dedicated to reducing aircraft noise in the communities around O'Hare Airport. ONCC includes representatives from nearly 40 communities around O'Hare. If you are interested, I do have a list with me of those communities. The FAA has given the ONCC specific responsibilities on several key aspects of aircraft noise mitigation as the O'Hare Modernization Program progresses, including continued oversight of the residential and school sound insulation programs. By joining, Wooddale can take an active role in the decision-making process aspect of the organization, and not rely on others to make decisions that affect Wooddale residents. Currently, staff is just an observer, we are not a member. Residential sound insulation eligibility is based on noise contours established by the FAA. However, the ONCC has been granted control of the implementation process of the sound insulation program. The ONCC neither endorses nor opposes the O'Hare Modernization Program. To join the ONCC, all the city would have to do is enter into an intergovernmental agreement. I also have a draft of that. There are no costs to the city to join this program.
Go ahead, another question, though.
I think this is something that, you know, I know several years ago, we brought this up, about joining this. I think this is really important, at this point, that the city does consider joining, because this group does have specific input over whether or not, what, in what community is going to get soundproofing or not. You know, I kinda read in one, in the article that was attached here, that basically, like a lot of people that were, let's say, specifically in Wooddale, that should have soundproofing, or should be in the soundproofing, are not gonna get it, because now, they're gonna move the money to the new areas where they're gonna build these new runways. And it doesn't solve the problem, though, with the existing runways. And I know specifically in Ward 4, at this point in time, we have a lot of residents that are still impacted dramatically by this. And if they do increase that runway, the 2,300 feet as they're proposing, they're gonna be impacted even more, because that means the flights are gonna actually be lower over our community, specifically, again, in the 4th ward. I would strongly recommend that the city not only get involved, but take an active role in this, and to the point where, not only do we have maybe a staff member attend, but maybe somebody from the council volunteer to attend the meetings and become involved and try and get in some of the committee meetings, so that Wooddale does have a voice in where this funding is gonna go, and, you know, so that we can honestly say, you know, we are trying to do something for our community.
Marshall?
I would nominate Alderman Wesley, if you're looking for a nomination. With respect to, one of the problems is, my understanding, or the history, was that this was a group that was just a, I don't know if it's true or not, but it was set up by the city of Chicago. And one of the things I found interesting in the article from June 28th that was attached is that it talked about soundproofing for the residential homes, it's been about $30,000 each. My numbers may be wrong, but my understanding was that all that soundproofing program was run through the city of Chicago, and that of that $30,000, about $17,000 went to administrative fees that was retained by the city of Chicago. So, less than half of the money actually went into the residential program. In other words, they could've done twice as many houses if they would've just eliminated the city and the workers that they had, that they forced people to use for that program. So, I'm not opposed to being in this, but the first question I would have staff bring to them is, you know, why are we gonna continue to have the city of Chicago implement the soundproofing program if it's supposed to be done by the FAA? In my opinion, the money should go to the municipality. Obviously, we're not gonna hand the residents $30,000, but if we got the $30,000, we're not gonna keep $17,000 for administrative fees. We're gonna try to put as much money back into the soundproofing program. So, I would support joining this, but that would be the first question I would ask at the first meeting, whoever goes, between either Jeff or Mr. Williams, that this is what we wanna know, why is the city of Chicago running this program?
I could certainly address those issues if we become a member.
Come in with a bang.
Mr. Coles? Also, if you go by the parking lot by the city hall in Bensonville, you'll see the trucks sitting there. They ain't been moved for a long time, because I go by there every day. They don't move them trucks. So, there you now checking the noise. There's four trucks sitting there every day. I never seen them move, and I go by there at 6:00 in the morning, and I come back by 2:30, and the trucks are still sitting there.
Different group, Joe?
Oh, no, same group.
I know.
Same name.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the trucks that you're referencing would be owned by SOC, Suburban Air Commission.
All right.
And it's debatable whether SOC still exists as an entity or not. We certainly, by budget, have not been paying dues into SOC. But one thing you do need to be aware is, in joining the ONCC, you are automatically thrown out of SOC, for better words, by their rules and regulations.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, since you're the oldest on here, not age-wise, I guess, in knowledge, what was the history between why the ONCC and SOC that they didn't think they could, you could be a member of both?
SOC felt that ONCC was a tool of the city of Chicago for airport expansion. I'm not sure if that is actually true, but that was the prevailing view among SOC members.
And is it true that that soundproofing program does still get referenced, or get administered through the city of Chicago?
I'm not sure that is exactly true. My understanding is, the ONCC is a separate entity, and they control the funding, the ones that's turned over them, it's independent of the city of Chicago. I think the city of Chicago is one of the members of ONCC, but they don't have any veto power, or any other extraordinary control over the association.
And when was the last time Wooddale even got any soundproofing from the ONCC or any other program?
I'd have to look into that, I don't, I don't know.
ONCC, to their credit, has never punished any of the SOC communities. It's always been on a worst-first basis. So, whether we are or not a member, it should not theoretically affect the soundproofing. But I think I do agree we should join the ONCC.
Just, go ahead. I was just gonna say, it's been at least over two years. The last program that was earmarked for Wooddale kept being delayed and setback, but it wasn't just Wooddale that was being delayed, it was all the different communities. And it had something to do with the contractors. What they found out was that, originally, when the program was first started back in 1985, that they had a problem with a lot of the contractors that they hired, and so, like, there are, there's some very strict limitations now on the contractors. In fact, we, unfortunately, Roger's not here anymore, but he could tell you some instances we had problems with when they first came in here. You know, put on doors that were warped, brand-new doors that were warped, put in windows, and all of a sudden, people had ice in their house in the middle of winter. There was some major problems. So, that has not happened in the last couple of times that they have done it, though.
Okay. And just so you know, that there is schedule for 54 houses in Wooddale to be done, because along Wooddale Road, my brother-in-law is supposed to be getting his done, but...
They haven't been done yet.
They're three years behind. I mean, they keep saying, delay, delay, so.
Right. That was the last one, it's three years, yeah.
Right. So, if there's no further questions?
I have one, Jeff, how many meetings have we gone to since we've been an active member?
I have personally gone to two of the residential committee meetings, and two of the committee, the whole meetings.
And what did they talk about? What was the...
They talk about contractors that they're gonna pick to do the work, they talk about which areas might be next, their budget, things like that.
And are they administering the money, then, as far as you could see, or too early?
The residential committee seems to be in complete charge of what goes on.
Any other questions? I make, any questions here? I make a motion to join the O'Hare Noise Capacity Commissioners.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Items to consider, future meeting. Choice program, Wooddale School District 7, status and seal and certification of communication center, intergovernmental agreement with Wooddale Park District, finance reimbursement of service render, soliciting of service ordinance. Anything else? Anyone carry anything else on this agenda for items? No? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Call the Public Works Meeting for August 10, 2006, order to let the record reflect the same members are present. Make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13, 2006. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carries. Next item is item number four, it's the 2006 roadway program, pay request number two. This is a street improvement project of Montclair, Murray Lane, Iroquois. Pay request number two is to Dunham and Company, an amount of $298,666,076. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
One opposition, motion carries. Next item is item number five, this is the report and recommendation, it's a recommendation from the Streetscape Committee, because of the Emerald Ash Borer, which I believe is an insect, it's causing havoc in some other neighboring states, and it's on its way to Illinois, in that the Streetscape Committee wanted to recommend a moratorium on the planting of ash trees. Before I turn over to Gary, I wanna ask, as far as, is an ash tree currently on our list for the tree replacement program?
An ash tree is an acceptable species to be planted. Actually, it appears on all of our new development plans, our consultant arborist has told me, that he keeps recommending that we don't allow them, and they, very typical on our new development plan.
And as far as, how do we tie in on a new development plan? Because we really don't have a landscaping ordinance, sometimes we just pass our tree preservation ordinance, but we really don't mandate what people are planting as far as on new developments?
It is reviewed, my understanding is, it is reviewed. Their landscaping plan is submitted and reviewed.
At a staff level?
At a staff level. And I know our staff has used a consultant arborist for that review in the past.
And I'm assuming that the Streetscape Committee wasn't wanting a moratorium on, we could impose moratorium on the residents. If Dave Toleme wanted to throw caution to the wind and plant an ash tree, we shouldn't, and we can't stop him from doing so. We're talking about a moratorium on anything we have a review over, so new developments, and also in our program for the public walkways.
Exactly.
Right-of-ways, I'm sorry. All right, with that introduction, any questions? I make a motion to concur with the Streetscape Committee to, you know, I guess, and I don't think a moratorium is the right word, it should be a motion to eliminate the ash trees from our tree replacement program list, and also remove them from any type of list that go out for development improvement.
You are correct. That was my fault. I was instructed that that should stay banned and not moratorium, so you are correct.
Second?
On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Next item is the parkway tree removal. It's a replacement policy. Currently, the city, and I guess it's not in a written policy, it's, God forbid, common sense, of when we've been replacing trees in the parkway, basically, if there's sewer damage, if it's an undesirable species, if there's, now, which we have a new one that's added to that list, I guess, storm damage, hazardous conditions, or tree is dead or diseased. Basically, this is handled at a staff level, when it gets over their head or a close call, they do bring in an arborist. And staff is recommending, basically, to have a new written policy, or memorialize what the current policy is as far as the tree replacement in the parkway. My first question, before I open it up, is, for the letter we got from the AP Landscape Consultants, who has a certified arborist, number one, why wouldn't we use MBL, who is our contractor we use for tree removal? Do they not have an arborist on staff?
Simply a matter of, MBL will get paid for the tree removal, and it's a matter of trying to keep an impartial person...
Very good.
Yeah.
And then, secondly, how much of this, when we have to go to an arborist, for example, the June 14, 2006 correspondence and inspection, how much does the city pay for something like that?
In this case, it was $90 for not just one tree, but to survey that whole... In this case, it was ninety dollars for not just one tree, but to survey that whole area. This past week, we had him out on also four locations. I think his total was a hundred and ten dollars for...
So fairly reasonable, when it's a close call. And then my other concerns, I guess, was on the recommendations, number four and number five. It talks about that when a tree is removed, that it is, the city is required to place a new parkway tree, and that when it's an area of decline, number five, it needs to be planted regardless whether or not the homeowner has requested it. I have a little problem with both of those because it kind of mandates. And the example I thought of, if we have, if I live, God forbid, next or close to Alderman Tolemay, and he had a tree in his parkway that it is dead, and he was ready for it to be taken down and getting rid of, and now he's a little bit older in age, and he doesn't appreciate raking the leaves, and I'm a younger resident up the street, and I'm looking, I'm on the list, and I really want to get a tree on the tree replacement program. I've been on the list for two years, and my name hasn't come up yet. Why would we give automatically a tree to Alderman Tolemay House when he might say, thank you for taking that dead one out, and I don't want a new one? So I think that when we remove them, we put them on the list, just like everybody else is on the list. Alderman Winger?
I actually had that item highlighted as well. I'd agree that, you know, for the people that request the trees, they would go the top of the list, and they're more likely to nurture that tree as well. And if it's a dry season, they're more likely to water it and sustain it. So I'd also like to see where people have requested the parkway tree, I'd like to see them come first, at least, as a priority basis.
So it is an ongoing list, not, when you said, so if you have a tree taken out and you want a new one, you go on the list, but if I've been on the list for three years, you're not going to leapfrog me because you just had a tree put out, right?
That as well. That's also a good point, that it would be a rolling list, and first in, first out, and the people that requested it versus not requested.
Mr. Holmes, do you have anything to add?
I think some of the thought here was that we do have areas of town where the mature trees are in state of decline, and the thought was to get some trees planted in there and get them maybe a decade of growth before we're going to be in there taking down the old trees. And someone may not want, you know, a new tree planted. And the question was, should we require a new tree to be planted in an attempt to get that, you know, that growth in there before we take out the old trees, or not?
And again, I think that we've had enough of a need for people requesting them through the roadway program where we lose some trees, or just, I thought that we'd never really satisfy our list on an ongoing basis.
I don't know if last year was an anomaly, but I know last year we had spent about sixteen thousand, I think, on, out of the twenty thousand, and the remainder, remaining dollars were actually planted along Irving Park Road.